You are reporting.
Thank you. So I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of January 19, 2021 to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Lombardi.
Present.
Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Vada.
Here.
Mr. Connell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
We have five present in the quorum. Welcome, everyone. To the Zoom meeting. Thank you for attending. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag. Of the United States of America. Into the Republic. One nation. Under God. In just a little. Liberty and justice for all.
Right, let's move on to public comment. Does anyone want to comment? On anything on the agenda? And/or let's go write the community comment or any other? Item that may or may not be on the agenda. Mrs. Sylvia.
Has his hand up.
I see your hand up. Feel free to speak.
Thank you, guys, for letting me speak. First and foremost, thank you, guys, for everything that you've done these this past year has been very trying. I am here to stand for the seniors. And and figure out what's going on. What are the plans with them as far as getting them back in school four days a week? At least, I think that these kids. Some of them are doing fine, but a lot of them are struggling. And, you know, being there last year, they've already missed out on so much. And they're going to continue to miss out on so much more. The least we can give them is a a safety zone. Within their classes to be able to speak to their friends, whether it be. Social distancing with the mask on or whatever, where they can at least see and talk to these people. That after June or after May, they'll they may may never see again. It doesn't appear that any of this is going to be over before then. And I would just like to support anything that we can do. To try and get these kids back together. Get them back in school four days a week and give them the best senior year that we can give them. The next four months are going to be interesting. We did a lot for the seniors last year, and these seniors missed out on even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. I I know that, at least I've received a number of emails with your similar concerns. And I I assume that the major majority of the at least names that we don't recognize. On this Zoom call. Believe something similar, so I don't know if anyone else wants to speak on this. Superintendent, I don't see any other hands raised. Do you?
I do not.
Okay. Seen no hands raised, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? The only question I have for the superintendent is. The replacement windows at the high school. I I don't believe this completes all of the windows, is that correct?
That's correct. Not even it's not even close.
Okay. Do you know if we could? Increase, like, for example, I I I don't have it right in front of me. I know there were so many windows to be done, say, 10, but whatever it is. If if in the next. Couple of weeks, maybe you can look at 10 more, 20 more, obviously, subject to the budget. And different things, I don't if that's something that you can look at, and we can hear from the rest of the committee, obviously, on on this. But if there are excess funds, I think that at any time we have excess funds, we should be. Using them for capital items because these funds. Will be needed someday in the future. So if it is a surplus, it's kind of a one-time surplus. Would not hurt or it would help to put that in a capital item and obviously, whatever capital items this committee agrees with. Would be a good way to to look at it. So if you can just.
Yeah, no, absolutely. In fact, we've already met on that in it to see what it would take to finish the project. Up $700,000 to finish the project. And we did meet with the town administrator and the town financial director with Lisa Harcock, myself, and. We we have an update on how much how many funds are how much is in the revolving fund? And. We've we've received quite a few reimbursements from the other projects that we've done. And so we're looking at reinvesting. Our reimburse our reimbursements and targeting the rare final replacement of the high school window. Beauty of that is that it does qualify for further reimbursement from the Department of Ed under warm, safe, dry. Obviously, warm because they're energy efficient instead of fuel windows we have now and safe because. For every classroom, we're putting in an emergency egress window. So if there is ever. An active shooter or some emergency at the high school. Our students can actually exit through the windows. There's a special emergency window in every classroom that they can they can leave the building. So, yes, it all qualifies, and I I think we're in good shape to rapidly move on finishing the high school window project.
It's great to hear, Superintendent. And if you recall. The. Town council in the former administrator. Put a put aside funds. Just in case we needed them. Again, luckily, the state came through and we don't need them. But they do have some capital money out there. That I have no problem requesting as a joint project with the. With the town council and the town. To try to raise joint funds to get our capital projects moving. Okay, so just let me know on that. Of course, we'll go back to the committee, I mean, this isn't a unilateral decision by any stretch, but you can look in those areas and make a make a presentation back to us.
Yeah, and but but the only thing I can say with the the monies that were put aside as a contingency fund. There was no school capital funds that were put aside in that contingency. We weren't funded any capital projects this year.
But but that was because. We we were, we thought that we were going to need a substantial amount of money, which we did not need. And I have no problem asking the town council to reallocate. I think they I think they allocated $700,000 or $800,000 put aside. So they have freed up $700,000 or $800,000, and I have no problem asking them to partner with us. In trying to do additional capital items that, you know, we need, we might need next year or the year after. We maybe we can move those up and and work on that together.
We're moving into having to replace roofs.
Well, I I think that's a big number.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. And and just on item number seven, a similar question. The active panels in the high school, is this everything we need?
No.
Okay, how many more do we need? I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is it?
All together to to replace all of the old. Smartboards, the 12-year-old smartboards at the high school with active panels. It will be about $120,000.
Okay, and again, if you want to look, we can't can't authorize it today, obviously, it's not on the agenda, but if you can look into that. And. And identify funds if they are available, they're not available, fine, but again, let's let's get if we if we have some excess funds this year. Let's move it to capital. If that's, again, it'll really be the call of the committee, but. I think that we all know that we do need to. Spend some money on capital here. Get us moving.
Very good.
So are there any other questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
I'm moved.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a comment.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate the fact that Christine Charis and Fran Johannes. Are continuing their involvement with the school committee in spite of the fact that they have retired. I think their expertise and their knowledge will be very helpful in their respective roles, so thank them very much.
Yes. Thank you, by Sharon, actually, I did, so. I wasn't when I officially appointed people, I was thinking that Fran was on the Budget Committee. And Chris was on the. The negotiations, and I did it backwards, so I corrected it. And I did call Mr. Rest and asked her if she was interested, she said absolutely, so we appreciate that from her. Again, two former members that are stepping up to the plate to help us.
That's great.
Both with tremendous experience, so thank you. Superintendent, it's falling to you.
So just a a couple of updates, so. We've been back in school in person for the the second week, we came back last week. I had sent something out to the parents and to the the staff, I was just pleased that over the vacation, over the break. I wasn't receiving emails from the Department of Health notifying me of people who have positive or gone into isolation. So things were wonderfully quiet. Which is exactly what we needed along with that additional week of distance learning. We were able to restart school. And be pretty much almost up to full capacity. We've had a number of notices from the Department of Health since we've returned. And so, you know, we're we're. We, again, we're having staff that is going into quarantine, we have students that are quarantining as well. Not terrible yet, but it is concerning. Our neighbors, I I was checking with our neighboring districts today. And I know Barreville, the high school, has gone into distance learning this week because they had 18. Teachers who were under quarantine. Smithfield is their numbers are spiking as well, so again, we're we're watching the community and we're watching our neighbors. Which will then help determine how we operate. We've been. You know, again, I give credit to all the work that we've done on the heating and ventilation system, our our custodial staff has been doing. Our teachers and our students with the hand washing and the mask wearing and the protocols and keeping with the protocols. We have been spared so far quite a bit compared to. The communities around us. And so we're just looking to stay the course because one of the things is that. We've been stable. I don't would, I do not want to be in that situation where like the districts around us where. One school after another is closing, it's opening, it's, you know, we've been able to maintain a steady pace. So I mean, what was that saying, slow and steady wins the race? So that's. I'm very pleased with the with the way the district has been handling this so far. You know, obviously, we want to accelerate the people returning, but we're also don't want to jeopardize what we've already accomplished. So given that, again, we're still watching the numbers and there's more students and more staff that I'm getting notified that they have to go into quarantine. I wish I had some inside knowledge as to when a vaccination would be available for students and teachers. I don't, that keeps getting rough. Our nurses have been vaccinated, and we just got an email today that our a number of our specialists are are. Our psychologists, our social workers, our speech and language therapists and so on. They are now eligible to get the vaccine, which is fantastic because they're working very closely, one-on-one with students, usually in small offices and small groups. So it'd be fantastic once they. Once they have their vaccine. Whereas I don't know. When our teachers or students can expect it, one of the things I can update you on is that we've. We've requested a substantial supply of Binax Now, which is a instant asymptomatic test. It's something that. Our nurse from the middle school is going to go get training on it. Even though she is a registered nurse, the requirements are everybody, everybody gets trained. So she will be going to the training and hopefully coming back, I've requested 1,000. Units of the Binax Now test. Now, what we're looking to do is to begin weekly screenings of all personnel. And all student athletes. Now, that includes, that's not just the high school athletes, but that's also middle school students who do after-school athletics and sports. We want to keep our sport, our athletics program running. Winter is very difficult because it now moves indoors. And so this just gives us another tool to try to check to make sure everyone is safe. Now, we're going to have more information coming out about this. This is non-invasive. You know, for teachers and for the older kids, they actually can administer the the Binax test themselves. It doesn't require a registered nurse to do this, I mean, we will have trained people available. I have had a good conversation with the North Smithfield Fire Department, and they're willing to. Jump in and help out if we wanted to. However, we decide to do the screenings, we will have resources within the community that will help us do it. And again, just for now, we're going to start with all of the the personnel. And our student athletes, middle and high school. All right, so I should have some information on that very soon. And we should be, we'll be starting this within 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 the coming weeks. So. The other piece that we we started doing and I unfortunately, I. I think we were between school committee meetings, so I wasn't able to update you on this. We've brought back the students PK through six. We've brought back ninth grade in fall, the four days. We've brought back in seven and eight. 10, 11, and 12. All students who have IEPs, all students with 504 plans. All right, so we we brought back a number of students. We still have seven and eight, 10, 11, 12 on the hybrid schedule. One of the things that. We've started to do in the middle school has jumped in. With this pretty quickly. Is do identify our most struggling students, whether it's academically, emotionally, psychologically. And the middle school. The 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 team leaders. The the. The psychologist, social worker, guidance counselors, they went through, and. We now have 30 additional seventh and eighth graders who were previously struggling. Are now coming in four days a week, we've expanded that number. What's even more impressive, I thought, is that. The middle school brought back an additional 10, fifth and sixth grades. Graders, even though. They have been in person for quite a while. There were 10, at least 10 students who are on full-time distance learning, were struggling on distance learning. And are now no longer on distance learning and coming in in person four days a week. So. The the similar conversation, planning is happening with the high school, also to identify the students. Again, we have the ID and the 504 students, the other students in 10, 11, and 12. Who are struggling, so academically, psychologically, emotionally. To begin bringing them in. Again, we we don't have the capacity, whether it's on the bus or, you know, to maintain any kind of social distancing and 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 stable groups. To to bring sweeping, bring back all the grade levels yet. But again, we're still targeting. So. You know, I I spoke with Mr. McGee and 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 he's going to have more information tomorrow night at the parent forum. That the the high school is looking at bringing back the the struggling 12th graders first and then moving on to 11 and 10. And so, again. We have communities around us spiking, we're maintaining stable so far, we're we're bringing back more and more students. Prioritizing and targeting. And, you know, I I really feel positive about. The direction we're taking, I I honestly wish the pace was faster, but. COVID is dictating how fast we can move. COVID is dictating what we can do safely, what we can do securely, what we can do reasonably and fall within the. Department of Health and Department of Ed CDC guidelines. So. That's. Bringing back the the struggling students is 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 a big step for us, and and we're we're very happy to have them come back. Now, Claire Arnold has. Has been working on other supports and projects and plans. To help students make up some learning gap, so I'll I'll just turn it over to Claire and she can fill you in on what her and her teams are working on.
Good evening, it's good to see you all, I have been working with. The administrators and the administrative team as well as teacher leaders, we have team leaders at the middle school and. And department heads at the high school. And so what we are working on is really it's their short term and long term, short short term is this year, what can we do to support our students this year? To get them over the hump, but this this group and the teacher leaders and the administrative team are also going to going to be start talking about long-range plans and into next year. What will we do and how we will we service all students because make no mistake, this year is a difficult year for learning and there is. Learning loss or learning gaps because of it, and that we're going to be. Working very hard to put in systems, structures, and interventions in order to support our students. And so at this point, we're really working on what Mr. St. Jean just said, is what can we do for our most struggling students and what can we do for all students? And so bringing in some of our students that for one reason or another. The distance learning, the hybrid is not working well, that's one of our our first things that we're going to do. And another thing I did want to bring up, and this was definitely brought up, and it was our department heads at the high school, the middle school team leaders, administrative. Everyone agreed that one of the things that we should think about and look at is. What we consider a passing grade, so in North Smithfield, we consider a passing grade as 70, and it's always been 70, it's been 70 forever. However, in in Rhode Island and most of the districts, 65 is a passing grade. And we think if we could change that, that would really help some of our students to pass and get the credit for this year. If we could bring it down to a 65, we'd be very similar to most every district or or the majority of the districts in Rhode Island at a 65. And it wouldn't change anything, if a student has a 66 average, they still have a 66 average, we haven't changed the standards, we haven't lowered the bar. What we've done is we've allowed them to get credit for that class with that 65 or 66. Average, and so it was definitely unanimous that we felt like that could really help our our students get over the hump. Because the challenges that they're facing this year are unprecedented and. The students that have a 66 average are working, you can't just do nothing and get a 66, and so. We didn't, we wanted to bring it to the school committee and get some feedback from you, I I don't know if it's something you want to vote on or you just want to give us. Us feedback, but that is something that's been in place for many years, it's in our. But I can't think of the word, but our manuals. That it's a that we have a 70 passing rate, but we'd like to change it to 65, so I'd love to maybe hear some feedback and. And see if we can just move forward with that and and inform our our teachers of that.
Thank you, Mr. Connell.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the committee. I was just, I was listening to Ms. Arnold and Superintendent St. Jean, the one thing I was thinking about. By the way, the 65 is fine with me, but what I was calling in town was there are the social aspects and and I can. I want to mention, I work at the State House and we feel a lot of what's going on. And I can understand the pressures, and the main thing I know is to keep the ship going and to keep everything steady, but I did just want to comment on the the seniors. Because I saw this last year coming, not because of any inaction on our part, but just the nature of the virus, or just you knew it wasn't going. Had I didn't think it was going to be disappearing by now, I hoped, but I didn't think it would be. And I do think that socialization is important, and with the seniors who are not struggling so much academically, but this is their last year. I I hope we can come up with some, you know, interesting and senior-type events to replicate. To a degree what they're missing, as you know, I had one of my kids who graduated last year and missed the senior year, or actually. Not even that much, a good part of the senior they were in. This year's class is probably going to have. Miss a good chunk of the entire senior year. And, you know, it's it's a lot to miss, and I don't want to, what I just want to say is, I don't want us to minimize or miss the fact the social aspects. Are important, they they're not going to dances, they're not being able to compete in as many, not as many kids are probably competing in sports as they want to. They're not having the band competitions that they used to have, and and all these things really add up to a great experience, which are not having now. I'm not suggesting we can replicate everything, but I think we need to, you know, put a little effort just in trying to. I I think I made my point, you know what I'm trying to say, and I understand that the priority is getting everybody across. The passing line, I understand, to get the ship of everyone across and leave nobody behind. I understand now, I just wanted to reiterate the, again, what I think the socialization aspects that. And it's not just us, everybody's missing out this year because of the COVID-19. But my feeling is I think next year really will be better, like, I think this is juniors will have a pretty good senior year. This is the class that's really going to take the biggest impact, if you will. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak?
Yes. I would, I'd like to speak to what Mrs. Arnold had to say, and I think that, given the circumstances of this year and given the the input and the advice of the educators. I can certainly. Be in line with the 65 grade point average. So that's just my opinion, and I think that, you know, we all feel exactly what Mr. Connell just expressed to us as well. So. It's my opinion.
Thank you.
I I concur, I think we all are in agreement that we want to do everything we can for our seniors. And. Mrs. Arnold, absolutely. The 65, like you said, most other school districts are doing that already, and this is just a. An unbelievably difficult time for students and to be failing a kid who ends up at 68, it sounds unconscionable to me.
Thank you. So, Miss Arnold, just first of all, I concur with the committee. And are you looking at like a one-year-only or a forever?
So honestly, at this point, we're looking at a one-year-only, but I would like to have conversations and discussions further. So we. About possibly permanently changing it, just to be in line with the rest, you know, the majority of the districts. And 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 when you think about it, it's the, it doesn't necessarily always help the student with the 68, because a lot of times if a student has a 68, the teacher's going to figure out a way to get them to a 70. It really helps the student with the 63, with the 62, they're so close, whereas if it was 70, they're so far away, they kind of just give up, like, there's. There's nothing more I can do and I give up, where so we can get our students that are in the low 60s to get to that 65 to. You know, to stay in the game and get the get the credits, so. So I do think it's, I think it's going to make a significant difference, honestly, for, and it's a significant difference for our most struggling students, so what's better than that? Keeping more students in the game.
Thank you.
Mr. Lombardi, do you think it's something that you should vote on?
Is it, I don't. So is it part of the superintendent's report? I'd rather, I'd rather you, first of all, I think that you have, the the committee has stated positively, so I'd move forward on that if you want a formal vote. If you wouldn't mind. If you wouldn't mind, Superintendent, just have it on the next agenda, very specific. So we don't get an open meetings violation.
Very good.
That okay, Miss Arnold?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just want to add one last item. So this goes back into the testing and the and the athletics. So, winter sports is beginning and again, it's it's problematic because they're indoor events. Across the state, it's pretty much no spectators. It's just the athletes and no spectators because there are really hard caps on how many people can go into a facility along with all the additional cleaning and disinfecting that happened before and after and so on. We we are, we are, you know, for for our seniors, though, we're going to make a break and probably get in trouble from the state side of things. But we we've had the conversation about allowing our senior parents access to the games as spectators. Now, they'll they'll be limited. It's, I I think it's 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 one parent per athlete. And and again, we'll probably get in trouble for this, but it's as Mr. Sylvia spoke, as some of the emails that we've been seeing and Mr. Connell mentioned that, you know, we need to give our seniors something extra. Try to keep things as normal. And I almost think that just as hard or if not harder for our students are the parents who aren't able to see their kids do these milestone events to go to games. Our kids are in, they're socializing, they are doing band concerts. They, our teachers are trying very hard to give them a normal a normal year as much as possible. So the fact is is that they are a tool, they are seeing their friends, they are seeing their teachers, we are still running athletics. We are still running other things. It's it's actually seniors last year that I felt the, I felt the, I feel bad for everybody. I wish we could get back to normal, but the seniors last year really took it hard because, yes, they had a beginning first half of the year and then they went into solid lockdown. You know, for months, they didn't see their friends, they didn't see their teachers, they didn't have any of these events. Mr. McGee pulled out all the stops and put together one amazing graduation ceremony. But they they lost that last half of the year. Also, for a lot of our seniors who are going on to college, they lost their freshman experience at college. You know, so at least our seniors this year, as much as we would, we want to bring them back and I know there's pressure. Okay, Superintendent, tell me a date they can all return. I can't. You know, we're just taking this week by week, month by month, we're seeing how things unfold, we're prioritizing, we're bringing in folks as as we feel as as necessary and as safely as possible. And, you know, I I do want to bring them back, except I cannot tell you a a hard date as to when that's going to happen.
Superintendent, Mr. Connell?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Superintendent. I I just wanted to add. I I didn't mean, I didn't want to come across as criticizing the work that's been done and all the work that was done last year. I think I I think both cases, they've been we were leaders, the school system and the leaders. But I just wanted to point one thing out, like, don't be hesitant to reach out to, again, the members of the community, the parents of these kids, the guardians of those children, the 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 adult and responsible for them. We, they did, like, a parent group organized a senior car parade, which a lot of the kids told me afterwards, it was one of the funnest experiences they've they've had that other groups didn't have. And that was really original. It was different. And I mean, I remember it was, I was out there by the tennis courts with as my mother was able to come, you know, she was in the in the danger group, but it was outside, we were able to be, you know, within sight of each other. And we all had signs out there. Tom Paylino, who's the state senator, came out with us here to share on the kids. And the roots were lined with kids because the public really came out in support of them. So all I want to tell you is you're not in this alone. Where, I mean, I I think I I know all the members on this committee, we're a part of this community and we'll be happy to reach out. We we can we can't move mountains, but we can certainly tell you that the community will come out and support the kids. So if you need us, don't be afraid to ask us to come out and try to gain some support or to gain some, you know, to work on some things. There were a couple of kids who were struggling, who I spoke to some of the guidance people with, who I knew just from the community. And then they weren't, they weren't giving me information, they weren't giving me any information, but I was just alerting them to some things.
Right, right.
Kids I knew, you know, and you know, just, hey, I see something I think you should know about this. And that sounds like Big Brother, but what I mean is kids, we can do a lot for the kids and we're happy to, as a community, and we're happy to do so. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the the support and the outpouring last year of this year, it's just been phenomenal.
Superintendent, just one other thing on the sports. I know that, first of all, that's a great, great program that you have with allowing the senior parents to attend. And and again, it's the local only, right? So local games or or matches only. I don't think it's
Yes, it is.
But what what Mr. Tech had told me, which I think is a a great idea, is that all games will be streamed. And so parents who can't see the game can at least watch it on a computer or however you watch it.
Yep, he hired a videographer for all the for all the games so that those who can't actually be inside they can, they can see their students being brilliant.
Great. Way to move forward, Superintendent. Any other discussion on this matter? And Superintendent, I know that there are some people that are on to hear about the seniors. We'll hear more about it tomorrow night, as you mentioned.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to, so anyone who's here, who didn't hear enough information, there is a meeting tomorrow night, a parents' meeting, Superintendent, and
Yes, and I believe the high school component, it's, it goes from six to six thirty. Each school is a half hour block. The high school is seven to seven thirty.
All right. And to access that, you can go on the website, I assume?
Everybody was sent, I sent an email last week to the entire community and the Zoom link was in it.
Great.
I prefer not to put it on the website, although I I I've seen in some places where it has because it has gone up there because I'm just concerned about those who aren't residents or have children in our school system popping in. But, you know, some of that cap's already out of the bag. A couple of people have already posted it on Facebook.
Thank you. Again, any any other discussions matter? Hearing none, let's move on to the informational portion, which is the resignations, retirements and appointments. There is a person there, it's for informational purposes. Does anybody have any questions? Moving to the next item.
I I would just, I would just like to welcome Elizabeth Gerton. She was an art teacher with us back in the Hallowell days. She was part-time art teacher. She was absolutely brilliant. Except for some reason, she wanted a full-time job and just working part-time wasn't enough. So she she got a job in in my old district in Central Falls. And so she worked Central Falls for a couple of years and now we have a a full art position at NSCS and we're just absolutely thrilled to have her back. She was top notch then, she'll be even better now.
Great, thank you. Moving on to new business discussion regarding school transportation as discussed at the budget subcommittee meeting. Superintendent, did you want to?
So the discussion that came up is that when I presented our budget at the at the subcommittee meeting, I had to put a giant question mark over the transportation line item. Because of this. So our three-year contract with our current provider is ending at the end of this year. We have to either, one, look for an extension of the current contract or go off RFP. Here's where my concern has been, is last year, when districts across the state, when their contracts, their transportation contracts ran out and they went out for RFP, there aren't a lot of bus companies in the state. Actually, there's two main ones plus one small one, bigger in other states, but not in Rhode Island. There was no, there was no competition. If you had a contract with one bus company, that was the only bus company that responded to your RFP. It wasn't multiple companies trying to get the best price or drive it down. It was just one company responding. And that was pretty much true for for most every district that I I I heard from from the superintendent. The response to the RFP is, you know, we're typically, we we expect costs to go up every year. We try to keep them down. And instead of a a bid that said, okay, next year your cost goes up three percent, year after that, three percent, year after that, three percent, or two percent, two percent, three percent, something like that. They were getting responses that the first year was seventeen percent increase, followed by a three and a three in years two and year three. So what happened to a a lot of the companies is that last year during the lockdown year, when everybody was on distance learning and the buses weren't running, they lost a lot of money. And so they're looking to make it up in current and future contracts. So, yes, that is my concern that when we we go up for an RFP, I don't think we're there, that we're not going to get many bids. And we may get a very, very high one in that first year. And so what I'd like to do is that I I have reached out to our current company and to discuss maybe extending. Our contract allows, I think, Lisa, correct me, I think, two years extension or one year followed by one year, separate years?
Two individual years.
Two individual years. Begin, begin that that conversation to perhaps extend what we have as opposed to going out into the wide sea, which, again, wide sea, it's not really wide. I think we would stand a better chance negotiating an extension of a contract rather than breaking it and starting fresh with any company that's going to look to offset maybe what they've lost in the prior year. So I I've reached out to the bus company. We have a a meeting tentatively coming up. We'll discuss. I'll get the facts, I'll get the figures, we'll we'll see what the the offer is. And then I would hopefully, by the next school committee meeting, be able to bring that forward to you for your, for your consideration and for discussion.
Thank you. Connell, did you want to comment about this? I know that you're the chairman of the subcommittee, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Superintendent, for your response, for putting this on. No, I I just wanted the after we had our budget committee meeting last week, which again is a public meeting, but, you know, had much less. I want the entire committee to be aware of what, you know, that that you know, that issue, that was probably the biggest issue that came out of the meeting, in my opinion, and in the budget. And so I just wanted everybody to be aware of that and we will go forward. Again, it was more just for information so people realize what the issue is and if anyone has any ideas. Maybe now is the time to share it, but you can, you know, think about it and we'll that's about it.
Thank you. Superintendent, maybe if you speak to Ben on this issue and I would think that a company would rather do a two-year contract than two individual contracts. I don't, I don't know why we couldn't, but again, let Ben make that call. We might be better off, get a better price if we say we'll extend two years right off the bat, but again, just that's just an option that might be on the table. Again, let Ben make that call. But if if that is on the table, maybe you can negotiate back and forth and see, see what the best deal is.
And we've already reached out to Ben and we have a couple of other things that, you know, we have in mind and, you know, we'll 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 see how it all fits.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll move on to the presentation and approval of the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget. I assume we're not prepared to move on this item? Or are we?
Who are you asking?
So the next item on the agenda is the presentation and approval of the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget. Is this something that you are looking for a vote on tonight?
I I believe, I'll I'll do a brief presentation and then I believe that the school committee would vote to approve this, to send it on to the town council for consideration.
Okay.
And I promise, unlike when I presented this at the budget subcommittee and I took fifteen minutes, I will encapsulate this into five. Unless, Mr. Chair, you would like me to repeat the whole fifty-minute presentation.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, you say so. So to cut to the chase, despite all the efficiencies that we put into place, the work we're doing in-house instead of bringing in vendors with, despite all of the consortiums that we belong to, the joint purchasing agreement, the partnerships, everything we do to bring down cost and keep it efficient. Prices still keep going up. And this year we did have COVID. We had additional expenses related to COVID. The only thing that I would like to stress on on this is that with the exception for the disposable equipment, the cleaning supplies, everything we've done, everything we purchased is going out with COVID. So we purchased very, very, very few things that are are specifically COVID-related. Other districts have purchased air filters, individual classroom air filters, HEPA filters, window fans to keep circulation going. We updated all the HVAC systems for the last for twenty years. We've updated technology because now, you know, that is so embedded in the way we do instruction and the resources that we offer to our students and teachers. Hopefully next year, we're not going to do distance learning, the technology will still be there. So technology purchases, HVAC system, software, it's going to outlive with COVID. So when it comes down to when you take the contractual salary increases, the benefits, the increasing transportation cost and cost of living and and all that, we're actually looking for the town for a two-point-nine percent increase to the full budget. Now, in previous years, when we've started putting the budget together, we would probably have to cut between four to eight hundred thousand dollars just to get to a four percent request. This year, we're just going, it it's two-point-nine percent we're going to be looking for. And there's a couple of things that makes this possible. Number one, we're anticipating next year, again, this is tentative, but the the state has given some preliminary figures for next year's state aid education. And whereas this year, we were afraid that we were going to be slashed and have nothing. And that's why the town generously and wisely put this, put aside the contingency fund. Next year, we're anticipating a hundred sixty thousand dollar increase to state aid, which helps, again, instead of that four percent, help us bring it down to three-point-something percent. We've also had in a couple of areas, some significant drops the overall cost. Number, number one, and this, this is unfortunate that COVID did prompt a lot of our teachers into retirement, whether they were ready for it or and this was the good, good, good as time as any, or it was a bit premature. We've had a number of We've had a number of senior teachers retire and, you know, that comes with a cost savings because we will then hire somebody who's in first, in the third step. So there, there were some savings in that area. And I'm just going to jump down to the actual departmental and to sort of encapsulate some of the changes. Now, central office, which is, which includes transportation. And let me tell you, we just talked about transportation, transportation, when you add our local transportation, our out-of-district transportation, all of this together, it's almost $1.8 million. Show you this chart here, here's the total budget. Salaries of a $26 million budget, salaries are 58%. But I mean, we're personnel intensive, all education is, we need people to work with kids. We need generalists, we need specialists, we need people. Benefits is 20% of the whole budget. Operations is everything else, schools, athletics, curriculum, technology, transportation. So if you look at our operations budget of all of this, $5.7 billion, 0.7 of that is just transportation. So that is the concern. So we're, we're, I know we're being very conservative and we're not hoping that we're going to be whacked with a 17% increase, that it will be something manageable. So central office, we're only, we only factored in a $65,000 increase. We made a lot of cuts, other efficiencies. Again, transportation is a question mark. Facilities, there's a 5% increase. Facilities has been level funded for, I think, longer than I've been here. So this year we did put in a bit of, an increase for facilities. That's really earmarked towards classroom renovations. Mr. CB, our maintenance department have been doing an amazing job. They've been doing top-notch renovations throughout the school. We've not brought in contractors to do this and we're just doing it for the price of materials. And this will also include updating, updating a lot of the, those 50-year-old desks at the high school. So technology, there's a bit of an increase for technology, again, they were level funded for a long time. We have factored in replacing some additional smart boards with active panels. Because as, as we said at the top of the meeting, it's $120,000 just to upgrade the high school. Whether we have a, a little bit of money in surplus that's, that goes towards capital. I have requested this, some funds on the town's capital budget. But because it's such a big expense, we're looking at pulling it out of lots of different little pots to get this completed. We need to replace these smart boards because right now they're dying. They, they were great back when Windows XP or Vista, I think, maybe when these smart boards came out. Well, the last Windows 10 update knocked out a bunch of them and we have teachers who use these things heavily. So we need to accelerate replacement. Additionally, our teachers and students have gotten acclimated to a lot of fantastic software that they were introduced to during the distance learning and, and hybrid schedules. We don't want to let go of that software. So there's a bit of an increase in technology for software and classroom active panel displays. Curriculum had, yes.
I don't, I don't want to set your priorities because, you know, your priorities are your priorities and I respect that. But if you want, if you believe that this is a priority and you have the ability to, you, you have access to funds to do that, why don't you make a presentation before the school committee? And let's get it done if that's something that you feel is important and the committee feels is important to move forward with. You know, I don't want to buy smart boards that are not going to be used. But if you believe that this is the way to move forward, then, then, then make that presentation.
Well, absolutely. And I tell you, I, I wasn't as in a hurry to do all of this. I thought we had time. Up until before the vacation, our entire IT staff went out on quarantine and I became the IT staff. And I experienced firsthand the frustration with the smart board in which I could get it to work for one minute and then it would stop. And we just could not figure this out. And it turned out that these things are just old and the last Windows update knocked out a lot of them, not just for us. This is, this is across the country. So yes, I, as, as the official IT staff for a week, I felt that game. And now I, I, I want to accelerate this turnover.
So, so superintendent, being on the superintendent search and hiring you was a good move, right?
Somebody quite, there were people who questioned my background in IT instead of, you know, some other areas, but you know what, it worked out. Curriculum, we're, we're looking at a significant decrease. And the, the reason is, is that, you know, legislatively, we, we have to have high-quality curriculum by 2022. Claire Arnold, her team, they did a, a great job reviewing, vetting, identifying high-quality curriculum in English language arts and mathematics. And in the past two years, they've essentially replaced the LA math curriculum with high-quality curriculum approved by the Department of Ed, all the boxes checked, great stuff. We still have science and math, science and social studies to do. Now, science does have next-gen standards, but the Department of Ed has not finished vetting and reviewing all the different science programs, science packages. So she doesn't feel comfortable making a tremendous outlay in a science program when maybe the Department of Ed might not approve it. So we're going to wait on the Department of Ed to do their vetting. And then there's social studies. The social studies curriculum is in revision right now. So there isn't a national curriculum in which to draw from, in which to purchase high-quality curriculum. So we're going to let the, the state and the country catch up in science and so, in social studies. So this year, there's a reduction of that. Pupil Personnel Services, Special Education, massive reduction in this, this area. And that is largely due to, we had a student or two who aged out of the program. They turned, well, 22, it's, oh, they turned 22, they aged out of the program. We also had one student who lived in the, in, in the community who required a one-to-one nurse for which we, we paid that bill. And that student moved. So in the world of special education and especially those with severe and significant needs that we can provide services internally, that they require clinical or residential placement, you know, the, the tuition costs can run between $60,000 to $130,000 along with supports like one-to-one nurses. So we, we, we hit it, hit a year in which a couple of people aged out and some, and somebody moved out. And there's a reduction now. And now on the flip side, we have a family move in, required services and now where we need to increase that money. But again, we, we shift as we need to. The high school is essentially level funded. Athletics has a slight increase because intrascholastic league dictates the stipends for coaches and also membership fees, that's, that's a slight increase. Middle, middle school is a remaining status quo. Elementary school has a slight bump because it, it's sort of the post-Hallam Bowl bump. And the elementary school is essentially larger than middle school as far as students are concerned. So they, everybody should be on par. You know, there should be some parity. But outside of that, where transportation is a question mark. I'm just going to point out, out-of-district tuitions, that's a big bite. Now, we, we are doing what we can to keep, I don't know where it is. I'll just tell you, we're doing what we can to keep students in, in school, in district, instead of going out to charters, CTE programs. And those numbers have leveled off. They were increasing dramatically. We started the marketing, we opened up our CTE programs. And now the number of students leaving us to go to charters and, and outside CTEs is leveling off and beginning to decline. However, we're still paying close to $800,000 leaving our community and, and going to other, other communities and other schools. Ideally, we want to bring that way down and keep the money within North Smithfield and invest in North Smithfield schools and not subsidize charters and schools in other communities. So, but we're, we're seeing a good trend right now in which it's, it's stabilizing. We're also seeing as far as enrollment numbers, just this past week, this past month, we've had 10 new students enroll in North Smithfield. So again, in fact, I, we, we have a, a couple more students that are looking to move into our CTE program. So, you know, our numbers are looking good despite the, the, the students that we have in homeschooling during COVID. I'll tell you, from a budgetary standpoint, there is legislation coming up to hold harmless districts whose enrollments have dropped due to the students shifting over to homeschooling. Right now in the state about, there's, there's 4,000 fewer students in the public schools than there were last year. And that's because there's a lot of parents just opting to, you know what, okay, the year, we're, we're just going to homeschool this year. They can go back once the, uh, once there's a vaccine. That legislatively should not affect our state aid education. They're looking to do a whole, whole harmless with that. Hopefully that would pass. The other thing that is, is, is potentially going to affect our, our aid for next year is the numbers of free reduced lunch. So, you know, that socioeconomic rating factors into state aid education. Because funds have been made available, all students get free lunch. They don't have to pay for school lunch, you know, there is a federal grant that handles that. The flip side of it is that our applications for free reduced lunch are way down. So, and it's those applications for free reduced lunch that then go into our funding formula. With that being down, we would receive less money. But again, they're looking to do a whole harmless for the, the, the reduced applications in pre, pre-reduced lunch. Now, we're still going to make a push, we still need parents to fill these out and send them in because there are other grant opportunities, other funds that are tied to free and reduced lunch numbers, the socioeconomic numbers. Already North Smithfield typically is challenged trying to get grants, although our demographics are changing and our, our, the students, the families that qualify for free reduced lunch have been growing over the years. So we'd like to be able to tap into some additional funds and resources to bring it into the community to help. So that's essentially the bite of summer. It's, it's pretty, it's conservative, it's status quo. There are some fluctuations based on need, but overall, it's, it, it, it's a lower request than we've asked for in the past. We are higher, looking at hiring just one teacher, adding one position to the budget. And that is for an additional special education teacher at an SCS. Again, the demographics are changing, our, our special needs population is growing. And we do everything we can to frontload special ed services at the elementary. So by the time they move on to middle and high school, there are different skills and, you know, they're, they're set to 16. So that's the only new position we're looking for. So if you have any questions or comments, concerns?
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Superintendent, the one thing I did want to ask is what's the increase? If you, if you want to tell me publicly, what's the increase in transportation from last year to this year, specific to Daco?
Okay.
And if you don't know, they're off the top of your head, that's fine.
No, I can tell you something, this, this is, this is where it makes it a bit difficult. So our contract with Daco was we paid when the buses run.
Okay.
From March on, the buses didn't run. We didn't pay. So there was a significant savings in transportation because we weren't paying for transportation. So as far as the base percentage increase, our contract, I think Lisa, again, called for a 2% increase from last year to this year.
That's correct.
But I, I think our contract was two, two and, I don't know, zero, two. Might be two and a half somewhere.
I think it might have been two and a half for this year.
So two and a half from what we would normally do? So two and a half from three years ago, or whatever the normal rates are, not what was, was actually spent, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So do you think that, I, I don't want to go to the town council. And once, once they see the number and they're not going up from it. So I'm concerned, the only concern I have is if we believe that the contract is going to be up higher and I don't want to use a number, can we account for that in the budget somehow?
So what we put in the budget was a flat 3%. But until we negotiate with Daco, we really don't have any idea what it's going to be. But we do adjust the budget come April for, you know, different things like health insurance. We're negotiating the, the teacher's contract this year. So there will be some changes that'll go forward and I would imagine that would be one of them also, if it differs.
Right, but, but if we, we're not, we're not going to have the opportunity to go to the council and say, oh, we need an extra $200,000. I mean, you know what I mean? Well, why, they're going to say, why didn't you factor that in originally? So I'm just saying, I'd rather go down than up. But if, if that's something that you feel you have covered or that you think that you're comfortable with the 3% as of right now, then I don't want to, you know, jump on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Conal.
If I may, would it, again, we, we, obviously we, we focus on this issue at the last meet, at the budget committee, subcommittee meeting and tonight, would it be, I don't get our deadlines right now, would it make sense to put this vote off a month? Just and see if we're in a little better, if we, if we had this thing a little more nailed down in the month?
Right, I, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to vote on it, but I believe that it has to be submitted to the council by Lisa.
First Monday in February.
Yeah, I know, I know there's a date coming up.
Do you want us to, if we can, over the next week or so, nail something down with Daco and have some more possibilities? Do you want to do a, a special meeting prior to submitting? If you didn't want to vote to submit it tonight?
Let me ask Lisa, Lisa, you want a number, we vote on a number, right, to send forward?
Correct.
We can't vote on a number plus the correction, you know, any, any changes that we have discussed tonight in a general sense?
I don't think so, but we do usually meet with the budget committee in late February, early March. So I think that would be an opportunity for us to express that we need to change it if we have to on that, at that time.
Right, I just hate to change it upwards because it doesn't go over well. That's, that's my only concern.
Would we just submit the budget and just be, you know, we're having, we're being very transparent, just let the council know, look, we do have this one variable that we're trying to, that we're still trying to, you know, deal with. I mean, just saying, would it be worth just informing the council formally that we do have this issue? We want to make you aware of it, we're working, we're using our best efforts on it. This is the budget we have. We want to make you aware of it. We're working, we're using our best efforts on it. This is the budget we have with what we expect, but again, it's because of the COVID situation being so unusual, there is that, it's a wild card, so to speak, out there.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Does anybody on the rest of the committee want to comment on it? Anybody have any further questions? You want to wait? You want to vote on it tonight?
Oh, I I'm sorry, I just do have a question. I'm just wondering if that um new position, that one new position of special education teacher at NSCS has been included in the budget, because I think I read in the um summary that there were no new teachers, um you know, being presented this year.
So that is included in the budget, but it's offset by a decrease in grade six.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Can anybody else have any comments or direction?
Well, perhaps we should ask Lisa, what does, what does Lisa need for us to do in order to move forward?
So I think what I, I just need you to approve the draft um to move forward to the town for consideration.
And and if we mention that it's a draft, does that cover us as as far as, you know, us potentially having to increase it?
I believe it does, and and I believe that they, the town also um looks at it like it is a draft.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry.
Good.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as the committee, I think, again, I could be wrong, but I think it would really, uh, I think it would help to be, again, we we are a transparent group, but just if we just really were very with them, with this, with the council, the committee, I'm sorry, the council, explain to them the reason it's a draft, I mean, the only, again, the variable here is with the situation with the buses, explaining how what happened last year with a lot of the bus companies losing. We can identify a couple of communities where this has happened, and that's the thing we're trying to avoid, but that is the the one very, that's the biggest variable we see i- in the budget, and we just it's something we're working on. I think if we at least let them know that, that that's what we're dealing with, and that's what we're working on, it'll at least go a little way to smooth over. As you said, Mr. Chair, they don't want, no one likes to be given a number and then have to come up, but at least if we're very upfront about what it is, and we're getting this draft to them to meet the statutory guideline, the deadline, I should say. You know, as opposed to being sitting on it. I mean, it's where it's in a public meeting anyway, voided, identified our problem, and I think it's really great that we're being transparent about it and putting it out there that this is what we're working on.
So, Ms. Mockhart, if we were to uh pass, if we were a a motion um to approve the budget, uh, the fiscal twenty-two operating budget um as presented, plus if within, from now till um your present, your um presentations to the council make any changes um that, or any increase in expenses that are reasonable um that you foresee before you submit it, is that something you're comfortable with?
Yes, I think maybe if we could include a um a short memo from either you or from the superintendent explaining what the things that are um not secure yet.
No, but even, but even, so we would pass it at the number that it's presented at, but authorize you to uh increase, say, for example, it can be very specific, any tr- any additional transportation numbers that you uh feel reasonably comfortable um that may increase, you know, things like, something like that.
I think that would be fine. I I actually have open communications with the uh finance director between now and the end of the year, and um we tighten up the numbers.
Right. I just don't want them to put in, uh, this is a request from the school department in their budget, and then turn around in three months from now and say, oh, sorry, we need another two hundred thousand dollars for transportation. I'd rather be on the high side and come back so that they know that there's a possibility there than than ask, once they put in their budget, it's going to be very, very difficult because you're going to have to cut another program
Okay.
to add, to to put, to ask for more money, and then rather than say, you know what, we're all set, we put the three percent in, you know, we're okay, and then just take, you know, the extra X amount of dollars and and reduce it. And we've always been transparent and honest with them, so I think that they're okay with that. Um, as long as we notify them as we go, which we have done since I've been the chairman, um, we have very good communications with the council and the administrator on on all of these issues, so. I I just like to, if if in a week from now, you know, they come back at ten percent, I'm not saying put ten percent in, um, but I am saying, well, maybe it's, maybe we've got to be a little more realistic with the numbers that are coming back.
Okay.
Is the committee, is the committee okay with that?
Oh, yes, I mean, I think we have to do what we have to do to protect ourselves, so.
So you want me to, I'll take a shot at this. So I'll entertain a motion to uh accept the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget as presented and authorize uh Ms. Mockhart to make changes prior to uh submitting it to the council based on um her knowledge and experience in in, let's say, transportation. Uh, and if there are other areas that that you are aware of to to make those changes. So.
So moved.
Fattam is looking at me saying, you're joking, right? All right, so let's, we have it, Fattam, do you have it?
That's why we tape them. That's why it's taped.
I lost you at the end.
All right.
All right. Motion to accept the FY twenty-two operating budget as presented and authorize Mrs. Mockhart to make changes before going to the council.
Based on her, you know.
Based on her experience, okay.
Knowledge and experience.
Knowledge and experience to make changes to transportation. Do you want me to be specific?
Transportation and other areas.
Okay.
That that she becomes, you know, aware of um changes.
Okay.
All right, so I, just to make it easy, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. So any discussion?
The only thing I would, um, I'm wondering just to the motion itself, should you say something like operational areas? Instead of just this sort of open-ended, I worry a little bit about people, not that we, I mean, we know Lisa will do the right thing, but I worry about the broad nature of that motion, and I don't want there to be any pushback.
Right.
All operational, right?
Yes, so you want me to make that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
So it's specific to operations, Fattam, is that okay? Uh, Mr. Colonel, I, uh, the, you, will you uh accept that as a friendly?
Yes, second.
So, yeah, Mr. Jones?
I just, I just have one thing that I might have missed is that, is there a threshold of um change that we're asking for? So if 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 Lisa needs to make a recommendation, that's of amount that she then say, okay, you have to, we now present this, I mean, vote on it, or is it pretty open?
I I, as as we've worked with Lisa for a long time, and I think that she's very, you know, conservative in making any changes, um, and and I think that you know, obviously, we could call an emergency meeting if she
Yeah.
cut transportation to zero. Uh, but I, but again, you know, if you feel that there's additional language that needs to be added in, feel free.
No, I just didn't know, I didn't know if I had missed it, but I don't, I don't, I don't think that's.
Yeah, I I don't, one, I don't think she's going to make five thousand dollar adjustments, and I don't think she's going to make five million dollar adjustments, so that that would be my, my opinion, but. Okay.
I mean, to be clear, what I, we're being very clear, we we've gone over this, uh, our biggest variable that we know, that we are aware of right now is the transportation contract. We know that's the issue. We know that's the variable. Of course, of course, other things come up, that's always possible, but we we have identified and discussed a very specific variable, so, you know.
And the only other thing I'm I'm thinking of is if if, you know, health, that she gets notified of health insurance increasing, she put in six, it's eight. You know, you can make that adjustment, but outside of those items, I wouldn't expect her to make any additional adjustments. Lisa, is that, is that how you feel?
Yes.
Well, might there be, might there be an issue with the um special education budget because um Mr. St. Jean mentioned a family um maybe moving in, so would would we need some wiggle room there potentially as well?
Superintendent?
Again, anything could happen, you know, but yeah, I don't think on the flip side, we can put aside hundreds of thousands of dollars, it, you know, just in case somebody moves in and needs a certain degree of services, so we 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 just have to roll the dice.
And I apologize because I thought you had said that you were aware of a family that was moving in, so.
Oh, no, i- 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 if I knew they were coming in, it was definitely, they've they've signed on house and all that, we would have.
I misunderstood that then.
I think there's a very specific difference in this. The busing situation is a unique situation which has arisen, particularly in this year, directly related to the COVID uh pandemic because of the lost revenues from last year, and we know districts where, what Mr. Superintendent St. Jean was talking about, there are districts which experienced those kind of issues in their uh bus transportation contract. The special education, a student moving in and out, that is just, every district knows that that's just, that can happen anytime, you know, there's nothing we can that's no more, we're no more or no less than that situation or uh than we are always, but the busing situation is a unique one that's probably a this year issue, so I think that's what makes it. That's all I get to say on that.
Any further discussion? Um, there's a motion on the floor um and seconded. Fattam, do you want to roll call this? You mind?
Okay, um, Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, could I just um in- interrupt here? I think we need to commend everyone who had input into this budget because this is such a lot of work that goes into it, and it's clear, it's concise, and it's um very direct and easy to read, so thank you to everyone who put all that together.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is presentation and approval of the fiscal year twenty-two capital improvement budget. Superintendent?
So I did present this to the planning board last week, uh, with the understanding that this was a draft, that the school committee has not approved it yet, so uh I I can also share some of the feedback that came as a result of this, but this is essentially, we're we're requested to come up with a six-year projection in certain areas uh for capital. So, you know, we have technology, the athletic complex facilities, and then the ride reimbursable projects. With technology, one of the things that we did have there in the the past capital budget was a uh replacing of the wireless at all of our schools. And unfortunately, that was one of those cans that kept getting kicked down the road. We would ask forty thousand every year, and it just got kicked down. Uh, well, I bet to the point where the wireless is, was was getting old. Uh, especially with all the technology we've been doing uh this year with the hybrid learning, that it was um having a hard time keeping up. So what we were able to do was to use some uh COVID-related funds and apply it towards replacing wireless throughout all of our schools, uh, which fit in exactly with what those funds were were designed for. Uh, so we were able to take that item off the capital, uh, because we we replaced the wireless throughout all the schools. What we do have left on technology, though, is did put fifty thousand dollars in for the replacement of the twelve-year-old smart boards and with that the panel displays. Right, so that's, as I said, different pot of money, trying to break it up, trying to get it better, uh, but yes, I agree. Maybe the process would be to just, just, just do it all at once from one pot and, uh, but to be honest, I've had this item on the uh capital budget for a couple of years now, and that keeps getting passed on. Uh, the other technology item is roughly forty thousand dollars to replace the switches at the high school. Again, they're getting on an age, there's a lot of traffic happening on those switches, this is the price after a federal forty percent federal reimbursement, so it's, uh, we we it doesn't cost us as much normally to replace something like this, we're a private company. Turf field. Talking about kicking a can down the road, I mean, this is, this is kicking a keg. Um, you know, it's at, it's at the point where we're going to break our foot on this one, or maybe quite literally, and after we just going to break a foot. Our ten-year-old turf field is now going on thirteen, I think Mr. Lombardi says maybe it's fourteen years. So it's, it's gone well past its life expectancy, and we keep saying, oh, we'll do another year, do another year. Uh, I'd really like to make the concerted effort to get this thing done. Uh, and one of the things with the planning board, uh, the conversation we had, and they got it, especially with the concession center coming, uh, the 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 facilities, the bathrooms, the concession stand. We talked about the use of the fields and, you know, some frustration that um sometimes the fields weren't open to the public. Uh, there were a couple of people on the planning boards that they drove by, and they saw people who didn't belong on the field, and so we had a discussion of what is this field used for? Uh, I did, was able to tell them that, yeah, we've had problem, that problem, especially with this COVID year, in which a lot of the fields across the state were shut down. And we actually chased people off the field uh from neighboring school who bused their kids over to our field for practice. And there was no use of facilities, there was no rental, there was nothing like that, so the fields have become somewhat problematic during COVID, but the take that I have, and and I think they agree, is that, you know, the these, except for when somebody's renting the field and has a game, or when our students are practicing or or playing, um, they're, they're a great public facility and resource. And, you know, we we want them open to the public. Uh, and so when we're talking about the turf field replacement or resurfacing the track and the fact that this is a million-dollar-plus project, the town can't do it alone, we can't do it alone, we need, we need to come together somehow, how uh do it collectively, and so we started having a conversation, and the planning board said, well, you know, maybe something, uh, you know, additional funds within Parks and Recreation, you know, additional funds for the school department to, you know, to do the turf field, so school department gets some capital, Parks and Rec gets some capital, we talked about, you know, corporate sponsorship, I I I said specifically, I don't care if CVS Plaxton's their sign go over the place, if they would pay for half of it. Uh, just to get this thing done. And so, you know, I know, uh, Mr. Lombardi has had a number of conversations with Alan Seapy about ways to finance it, ways to subsidize it. Uh, Alan has a uh an architect coming in to update the plans for the resurfacing of the track, uh, track, uh, uh, the field, resurfacing the track, looking at putting in the throwing cages to be able to do, uh, post, uh, tracking building. So, we had plans uh done up about three years ago in anticipation of getting all this work done and surfacing the field. Well, three years have passed, the prices have changed, maybe the plans have changed, so we're updating that. So I told the planning board that um we should have, you know, coming up some really hard numbers with an actual plan to 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 consider. So they will take a look at that when they're looking at doing the um capital uh recommendations next year, uh, with the hope that we can get this field done.
So, Superintendent, um, I know that you have two hundred thousand dollars here that we already have parked, I believe, right? But, but how much? Oh, I'm sorry, um, how much, yeah, we have two hundred thousand dollars already put aside, is that correct?
Oh, on the.
Oh, maybe, Lisa?
Yeah, it's one hundred fifty or one hundred eighty thousand, Lisa?
It's up to two hundred eleven.
Okay, good.
So, Lisa, don't, don't we also, I I I'm almost sure that the council put aside, and it might be for the concession stand or something, some additional funds. I thought it was at least a hundred or or two hundred um two one hundred dollar allocations, it's when Mr. Buregard was president, I believe he allocated money towards, i- i- you know, it might have been, it it was, it was towards. towards, i- i- it, you know, it might have been, it, it was, it was towards the complex in some way, if I recall. Um, so, we, so if you say, you know, I don't know, if it's, i- i- if this $400,000 parked and we run a surplus and we go to the town and say, you got 800,000, maybe we can put this to bed.
Just do it.
It would be a huge, you know, and then, you know, and then I think that when we have a facility at this level, not only will we bring in $50,000 a year, but I think that you could probably bring in a lot more, um, money, um, by renting the facilities. And again, because it's a turf field, you can rent it pretty much year-round. Uh, I know that they're renting it right now for, for a soccer league, playing in, in, you know, in cold weather and everything. So I, I think that this can be, and, you know, a, a win-win for everyone. It's been talked about for a long time, it's past its prime. Um, it's a beautiful facility. Um, if we make it a state, if we put in the bathrooms, or the town puts the bathrooms in, um, and we have a statewide facility, I think that's huge for our area. So.
And what I like about piecing this all together using these funds is that whereas we do have, uh, funds sitting in the revolving fund, uh, a project like this is not reimbursable, uh, variety. We don't get any money back for doing this.
Right.
So it, I, I like the fact that we can keep it separate, we can still use, um, some funds to get the reimbursements and then other things that we're not expecting reimbursements, just to get this over.
I'm, I'm wondering, um, not, you, I think it would have to be, uh, uh, outside of you, but the Take It Outdoors campaign, I don't, you know, obviously, the governor's leaving, um, but they were giving grants out, um, to show that you were taking, you know, your events outdoors. I did reach out to, um, somebody in the governor's office back then, um, asking information about it. They were gonna look into it and get back to me, but that was a while ago, so I'll follow up on that. Um, so there, there, I believe a fund's available on the Take It Outdoors campaign. You know, that, I'm, I'm not gonna say it's a lot of money, but anything helps.
Very good. Yeah, I, I, I feel, I, I feel pretty confident and, uh, you know, certainly the, uh, the folks at the planning board, they, uh, they got it. I mean, they, 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 they were telling me they, they go there with the kids, they use the field and they, they really see it as a, a, a great community resource and, uh, you know, sense of pride, so. So I think something is gonna happen this year.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And so on the facility side, this, this is something Alan requested last year, he, he'd like to request here, uh, coming up, the cargo van. Uh, we have a great big inked-in-box truck that we, uh, tour around the place. He would like something smaller and more reliable. Um, so we requested, uh, this is a, a price for a used cargo van. Uh, and then again, uh, this is something that, uh, we requested, I think it was funded once, uh, but $35,000 for in-house renovations to classrooms. So that's also a little piece, uh, you know, we put into the facilities budget. And again, we kind of pick and move i- 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 in, in, just target where we can. Uh, so like you, as you said, so if there, there is that surplus, and I hate to use the word surplus, I look at that as just careful money management. Um, you know, that, that, that then goes back into, uh, uh, facilities and capital. Uh, we've, we've been able to do some of that, um, outside of the, the capital black request. And then finally, the last piece is just the, the request in that revolving fund that we, uh, uh, that, that's there for ride-approved projects and reimbursements from, uh, thirty-five to forty, forty-five percent, uh, rate. Just if, if, if they could pop it off every year with 200,000, that we could keep rolling these projects on and keep applying it and then getting the reimbursement. Uh, that's essentially the capital improvement budget. Uh, like I said, I did do a, a brief presentation to the town planning board last week. And, uh, but, nothing's locked in. I told them that, uh, the school committee has to review.
So Superintendent, just, uh, on that revolving fund, um, with the amount of times we've turned it over, we might be at a hundred percent by now. So, um, I know that we keep on using that money and get the new money, we put it right, sink it right back in, get reimbursement, sink it right back in, so that's great, I, you know. Lisa, thank you and, and Superintendent, thank you on that. Mr. Seapy as well. Does anybody have any questions? So, um, oh, Mr. Connell, did you have any questions? So I, I will, uh, I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two capital improvement budget as presented.
So moved.
Alright.
Oh, second.
Alright, I made it, Mrs. Mayo, uh, seconded it. Um, let's roll, any further questions? Let's roll call this, Fatima, please.
Okay. Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Um, let's move on to all business fiscal year twenty-one operating capital budgets. Lisa?
Um, the reports are in your packet. Um, that's voted unless you have any questions.
Uh, is there any further business? Hearing none, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.